Good evening, welcome to my school, it's Monday, March 13th, 2023, 6 o'clock. All the names of order and access.
Mr. Gayheart.
Yeah.
Mr. Gatton.
I'm here.
Ingersoll.
Here.
Mr. Martel.
Here.
Um.
Here.
Mrs. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Scarrow.
Here.
Ms. Colton.
Here.
Mrs. Williams. She is absent.
Alright, we do have a quorum, we'll continue tonight's meeting as noted as first aid statutes. I don't know what's on the agenda. Hearing none, let's start with reading that, go to the Tibbetts Elementary.
Good evening, I'm Brian Frost, I'm first of all at Tibbetts Elementary, also I have a couple of prized pupils with me. Noah and Emily Tuss, and then their mom, Jody. Our presentation, tell you what guys, I'm gonna grab another chair, you guys can sit up there. Presentation is about what we call Literacy Week at Tibbetts, and it just took place here at the end of February, beginning of March. Mr. Taylor, if you wanna go ahead, really it involved four key events, starting with our PTA book swap, which Emily is gonna talk a little bit about, as well as Read Across America Day, our staff book flicks event, and then finishing up the week with Battle of the Books. So all four events take place over roughly a week's calendar time. Starting off at that book swap, that was on the 20th of February, so it's where families donate their books that they no longer use, read, need to the school. We have PTA volunteers that sort through those books, look at what would be appropriate for us to reuse, and then do a lot of sorting based off of that, so then our students get to then walk through and shop at the book swap, and basically get some slightly used books that become their own to take home and keep. So some statistics about this year's swap, this was the seventh year our PTA has done this, and I believe it's a unique event to Tibbetts. But roughly 3,000 books were donated, you can see the different types. One piece is that based on what we we collect in donations, sometimes we need more picture books or more chapter books, therefore we worked with Memphis Memorial Library. They were able to donate another 150 books to the swap. And then based on what we had in collection, in the collection, then each grade level got to take home some books over there at home. So Emily, you wanna show the books that you were able to swap in and take home? What do you like best about the book swap?
Daddy, I can get the books that I want to.
So what were the titles of the books you got to make a challenge?
Fourth day, and I guess, um, a natural activity heartbreaker. And who's inside a horse?
Who's inside a horse?
So Emily's in third grade, and then Noah in fourth grade, what did you grab?
I grabbed one book, that's Ruby Haller, and it was also a BOP book.
Oh, it was a Battle of the Books book, which we're gonna talk about here. So the, there's some pictures from our book swap, you can see the collections on the tables, the shopping, some of the kids with their books, and then an entire class. Second event was Read Across America Day, each year that is celebrated on March 2nd. It's the birthday of Dr. Seuss, that's an annual event, is part of Read Across America, that's initiative of reading created by the National Education Association. And so again, that's more for our primary students, K1, 2, of course decorate like Cat in the Hat. You can see again them celebrating that day, we also had fifth grade and second, or fifth grade and kindergarten reading buddies that had paired up, did some of the crafts as well as reading books. Staff book flicks, that was something I believe that came out of COVID, rather than families coming in to read at the school, we were able to share some of our favorite picture books with families in kind of that Netflix style video format. This year, we were able to share out 30 stories, if you wanna click Jason, 30 stories with Tibbetts families. As of last night, I had about 180 views on my story, which is the first one that they go to, kinda tells them how the program works. So that's almost half of the number of students that we have at Tibbetts. From there, we purchased the books that we feature, families are encouraged to send in a kind of a mail card of their favorite story that they were able to view, and then we pull those cards and give away copies of the books. Families that participated. Last week, we finished our literacy week, the Battle of the Books, that is a program for our 4th and 5th graders. They come in in the mornings, and over a period of time from December through February, read, there's 20 selected titles that are chosen, some are picture books, some are chapter books.
And some poetry and.
Thank you, Noah. They come in each week, we have volunteers who offer to coach the teams, and basically, they they learn all about those 20 books. Some of our kids, I believe we had five or six this year that read all 20. And really important to know your authors and illustrators, right? Because every question in the battle, you you basically identify which book the question is about, and then you have to name the author and the illustrator. I wanna say we had 15 students of the 60 that participated that were able to, you know, test out that they knew every author and illustrator. Click the link, Jason, so again, 60 4th and 5th grade students participated on 10 different teams, we had 20 parents and staff that volunteered to coach those teams. They came in nine Friday mornings before school to practice, and then that culminated in last Wednesday's Battle Day, which kinda took up our morning, where each team was able to participate in five different battles. Added this year, the top two teams were invited to come in on Friday and challenge our staff teams. The staff, we were able to read the six picture books. And I think overall, we had almost, almost every question answered correctly in the in the two battles that we had Friday morning.
So were the reading animals, the picture, one of the top two? I've been like waiting to find out.
Yes.
I had a bunch of the 4th graders at my house, they come.
Got it, so so the picture with Miss Gillette is a picture of all the students that participated. Some of the other, the one up in the upper right and the lower right were the two top student teams along with the teacher teams. And the small picture is a picture kind of of a practice day where they were hard at it. Yeah. No, oh, whoops, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Battle of the Books is great, all the years I've been a judge at it.
Yeah.
Elementary school, it's always fun, it's just, I'm so excited about it.
Yeah, we had a couple of guest judges, Mr. Wells and Miss Gilbert, who recently left Tibbetts, back to judge, it was, it was a fun day. Noah, anything about your experience that you wanted to share with Battle of the Books? How long did you practice?
A long time.
A long time, how many of the 20 books would you read? All 20? We were one of the ones that. Teams, you know, sometimes would split it up, you know, we're gonna take these three books and do it that way. That was my responsibility of the six picture books, like two that I. What's that? Well, the author and illustrator were the same, so Cherry and Cherry, the armadillo from Amarillo was was my my focus. Other questions about literacy week at Tibbetts?
Noah, did your team have a name?
I read. Oh, you were on reading animals, okay. I had the twins in Canada at my house, we were pretty excited.
I was the big one, the shark.
The shark, okay, now I can see you.
And you had to wear one to see.
Picture's pretty low on our screen. Actually, how were you all, what were your names?
Uh, my team was, and then the other team was.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you Noah and Emily.
Skills USA overnight.
So I'm Mark Melvitt, the teacher in the rookie skills USA, and I've got our officers, we have England middle, our president, Uzi Greer, our vice president, Dylan Font, and our secretary, Uzi Rudolph. So we came tonight just requesting overnight travel, just one evening at the Skills USA state competition, April 25th and 26th. And being the new guy in the black, I kinda asked the kids what they wanted to do or see differently this year, and one of the things that they had said was to be very helpful to be at the venue for the overnight, because they got back very late last year, 10:00, 10:30, and then they would just turn around and get up right away at 5:00, 5:30 in the morning just to travel right back up to the same venue. So we got the cost in there, and I did get confirmation this morning that we got the 114 rates, so we'll be at the Sheraton, with seven rooms. Jamie Saunders, the assistant principal, will be out there chat room, and it should be close, we should be able to cover it with our remaining Skills USA budget, our funds. And if not, since it is a CTE sponsored event, and most of the kids that are participating are also CTE students, Jolene Pellet said that we could dip into our CTE grant if we needed to to cover the fund, so it should be no expenses for the kids other than spending on.
Yeah, and we receive, well, it's not quite a thousand dollars, we receive up to a thousand dollars for each student who graduates with a professional certification in each year, and that, those monies go right back to the CTE programs. Well, our kids with those on the basis, so it's.
And you have at least one and probably a couple of.
Questions?
So what skills are each of you going to be participating in?
Me and Luke are in urban search and rescue, where the goal is we built a robot, and we use it to drive around and simulate like trying to find ordinances in a neighborhood.
Okay.
And then Dylan is part of team engineering challenge, where they like, let just make something with criteria, and they try their best and the time limit.
So you don't know what you have until you get there?
Yeah.
Oh. Are you alright?
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Melvitt, for taking over the program and doing that, it's a wonderful experience for the kids, yeah.
It is.
Yeah. Much appreciated.
Is this the first time that each of you have gone, or have you all gone?
Yeah, I went last year.
Okay.
Well, that was virtual, remember? Very different though, I'm sure.
Well, congratulations.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
Thanks.
Other questions? Otherwise, per policy, these overnight, so we didn't approve it.
I move to approve the overnight travel request from Skills USA as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the overnight travel request from Skills USA as presented.
Now, Mr. Gayheart.
Yes.
Mr. Gatton. Noah, he's muted online. Uh, Mr. Gatton.
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow.
Yes.
Ms. Colton.
Yes.
Motion care, so have fun.
Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate it. Quick, before we, excuse me, do you mind sharing if you have completed a professional certification, whether it is?
I've completed one in Fusion 360, which is 3D drawing software, and one in a Dremel 3D printer.
I have also certification in Fusion 360, I've also taken a couple machine classes, and I have also tickets in measuring places, such as the micrometer, the dial count. Awesome. Same for me with Luke, where I got certified in Fusion 360 and microm and machine, but.
Awesome. Very good.
It sounds super impressive.
And these are professional industry-based certifications, so. Thank you.
My god, it kinda does sound good.
I'm John Yendo, I'm the athletics director, I'm happy to get a chance to come and talk. Jason and I have been communicating a little bit the last couple of weeks about what types of trainings and things like that that we're doing with our coaches, and I'm gonna drive towards the mission statement, we have, we're doing some coaches' PDs on Wednesday nights once a month, so we invite all the head coaches in. And this, this is the second year of it, and we're working around this mission statement, and our goal is obviously to get as many of our coaches on board with this as possible, we've had really good turnout, but this is what we pretty much spent like the first nine months on, so you can see it there. This is the second year of it, and I won't read that all to you, but this year, I call them elevator speeches, but we're spending some time, like if you ask me, like, give me your best, like, commit story, I would, I would think that all of our coaches could do that, the whole idea is to try to get as many of our coaches in front of our kids that are transformational and not transactional, and so that's kind of the goal, recognizing that, you know, athletics is very emotionally charged. We're in an arena where, you know, I think it's an extension of the classroom, we wanna try to deliver a positive learning experience for as many kids as possible, but then we try to work around some of those core values, when we interview candidates for jobs, you know, we talk about things that are like, what makes it successful for you, and it's not wins and losses, it's developing character, so. And some of these pictures are all really fairly recent, those were most of the kids that made it to state this winter, so you wanna click on the next one, Jason, so. So then, like, that's the mission statement, so, and we are mentoring, or we're doing a lot of mentoring, there's some parent, athlete, and coach feedback on this thing, a program we use called Champions 101, this guy out of the state of Indiana, Travis Doherty, he's been great, he's been in Elkhorn to visit us once already this year, and we use a lot of his software, so kids who complete this, you know, like, why do you play, and the coaches have a completely different bunch of stuff, and I can certainly show you that, there's a link to this presentation, or you can look that over if you have any questions. The parent component of it is introduced at all of the parent meetings, and we do have some parents who've taken advantage of it, I would love to come up with a way to get all the parents to do that, 'cause I think that would be really cool, so, but that's the mission statement that we spent the majority of time, I do post that picture up there, 'cause Mike Story, he's done a really good job with his girls basketball program, he gave away all of his end of the season awards based off of his, the six Cs that we have, so, you know, we're trying to get everybody to speak in the same language, so. Those are the core values, and once again, working on elevator speeches, I call them, to get people to talk about those, so if somebody asks one of our coaches, like, or a kid asks a coach, what's it mean to be committed, I I'm hoping that they have a story that they can share about what being committed looks like it is, so. Once again, speaking the same languages, the goal, we also, I meet with our student leadership team, which is seasonal every Wednesday during homeroom, and this is the type of stuff we talk about, so it's, it's probably, you know, not what you'd think it'd be, but it's, you know, like, we hit these Cs really hard, and like, you know, how to be good leaders, and those are going well, I'd certainly welcome any of you guys, if you wanted to come in and sit on one of them, we'd be happy to, have you come in, just sure they would like that too, so. Those are the core values that we're trying to stress through everything that we do, so if, you know, this is what we spend the majority of our time talking about with our coaches as well, so. Next one, the WIA requirements on coaches' training, and I know that we had specifically mentioned a little bit about mental health, there are no mental health requirements, the requirements are basically first aid CPR and using AEDs, that's the, that's their sole training right now. And these are some other things that we do here, I mentioned that youth football one, 'cause Jason and I have had a lot of conversations about some stuff that they're doing, which is pretty proactive with their coaches. I think the WIA is moving towards more requirements, but at this time, there are none. The Champions 101 resources are currently working on mental health training for coaches, the NFHS has some courses, we do have some coaches that take advantage of that, they're available for free, some are paid, but most of the ones are free. And then, as I had mentioned before, the the coaches' culture meetings are mentioned in here as well.
Are there, so all of these are hyperlinked to those?
Yeah.
Different?
Yeah.
Requirements, if you wanna look and see?
Yeah.
Those requirements, so the WIA does require their, which portion do they?
See, if you're choosing, they're choosing exactly what the requirements are, so it's CPR, first aid, and AED certification, and they get trained via a link that we provide for them, everybody who coaches in the district has to fill that out every year.
Is that just head coaches, or all assistants?
All assistants too.
Do they also, all assistants have to do their rules training for their sport, correct?
Rules training, yeah, 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 yeah. And then, this is just the group of people that showed up this last month to our Champions 101 stuff, and this is like some of the stuff that we've been talking about this year, like, what's our why behind coaching? Teaching lessons, building skills, you know, what success look like, I know this last month, we, and we talked a lot about transformational versus transactional, and if that's not, you know, the the coaches that are kid-centric and are trying to, you know, keep the kids' needs in front of their own, generally are the transformational ones that we'd like to see. I don't think any of our coaches are purely transformational, nor do I think any of them are purely transactional, we're somewhere on that continuum. And I think a lot of the skills that we have in this arena, you know, are things that you don't oftentimes see till years after the fact. We have former basketball player who played for me, Corey Lindenberg, and some of you guys may know his team, girls' basketball team, got to the sectionals, sectional finals this last couple of weeks ago, and he's coaching up in Summerset up by River Falls area, and he sent a really nice email to me, thanking me and Dean Wilson, and he held me in his revere, I don't feel that I'm anywhere near that level, but those are the types of skills you have when you like give back to the community, and nobody ever went into this to do the wrong thing, my kids, they all went into it with all the great intentions, and some of those skills, you know, really take a long time to develop for some people, and I would have never guessed in a million years that I had a big impact on that kid's life, 'cause sometimes I think coaches get caught up in a, like, kid didn't play much, and my story, I remember about Corey, was he came in a game that we were winning by like 30 points, and he pulled up right in front of half court, he shot, and he missed, I called timeout, I took him out, and I said, that's not how we act, and that's not what we're gonna do, he never mentioned that, so I'm glad that wasn't just like a memory of playing for me, but everybody has different ones, but it's pretty cool to think, and and I think we're doing a good job with our social media stuff and trying to accentuate all of those skills we have, we have an official from Elkhorn who's working on state championship game this weekend. I should have mentioned at the very beginning, we had a lot of good feedback on hosting the boys' sectional finals this week for boys', it was really awesome atmosphere. We have a great gym for that type of stuff, so. I think we're doing the right things, and and I think that as we continue to build our capacity in our coaches, you'll see even more of that Champions 101 stuff, 'cause we hear a lot of the conversations with kids, they're having these conversations with their coaches now, which is exactly what we wanted to have happen, so. Okay. Um, yeah, we can, I, I, this is how I talk about elevator stuff again. This is my 10,000 feet speech, and, you know, I see draying between, and I'm not trying to give any theory here, but there's draying between education-based athletics and profit-based athletics, that's the toughest stuff that I deal with on a daily basis in my job, we are an extension of the school day, our coaches are teachers, we don't have tons of people lining up for these jobs. We do the best we can, I do think that we have every intention to change the arc of kids' lives, we wanna make them better, and I think we're, we have a lot of coaches that are doing a lot of really great things right now, and we're recognizing that there are some bumps in the road, and it's very emotional for coaches and for kids, is all part of the growth process here, so. Yeah, I think we have one more slide, Jason. Yeah, and once again, these are things that we're currently working on, common language, I call it organizational clarity, if you talk to all of our coaches, you should hear similar conversations and things that we're talking about. And that Champions 101 curriculum's been really good, so, and I had already mentioned that education-based stuff is different, it's just different, so.
How often do you meet with the head coaches, and we have those meetings?
Once a month. Yeah. Yep.
And I know when you're talking about that common language as well, just getting to the point where having all the coaches buying into the strength and conditioning, or that that weight training, and having that ongoing program throughout the year.
Pushing kids to go off to other sports, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, just not just focusing on one and so forth. Questions, really, I thought it would be good to bring John and give an idea or overview of what he's been doing with the coaches, the programs, and looking at that, it is, I did wanna go back to this slide right here, really, or whoops.
There's also links.
Yeah, there we go, just to clarify, so we do have that, the safety training and the rules training that all coaches go through at the high school and the middle school level, they go through that as well, what's unique with the youth football, with that program being a part of the on the scholarship program as well, the league requires all coaches to be USA football certified, and they have about a 15 to 18 hour training that they go through, a number of different modules on there. Similar to WIA's training on the safety, the AED, those safety plans, but then also techniques and age-appropriate development and so on, so.
I think youth soccer is the same way, they're way out in front of the other ones.
So that's a pretty common organization with those youth sports, the USA background, now, what changes, like, our league has a role that the coaches can't work with the kids until they're certified. Through that, they have to.
Is there concussion training in the WIA requirement too?
Yeah, and we, yeah, we have all our kids going through all that stuff too, yeah, how to handle those, yeah.
Yeah, I just didn't see it, like, when I opened the link.
Yeah, it's in there.
I had to do a two-hour one for youth soccer, and it was extremely intense.
I believe it.
I just, I didn't, I didn't know if it was.
Yeah, it's part of that, yeah, it's in there.
It's just not separate.
Yep, it's in there, the, and if you guys want any information on that Champions 101, or wanna create an account, log in there and mess around a little bit.
I wasn't able to log in and see.
Yeah, send me an email and I'll get you set up.
You know, are you a parent, are you a coach, and then it's just a general summary?
Yeah.
You can't like go into like any of the lessons.
You can go into the lessons.
Yeah, I couldn't when I.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
No, look at the PDFs.
You can look at the PDFs, can we open?
Oh, see, I thought you could too.
Like the $9.99 a month?
No, it doesn't have.
Wouldn't ask for money, I stopped.
They were asking for money on that site? No, they were asking for money on the NFHS site, maybe for classes, but the Champions 101 is not, it's a specific Elkhorn, you wanna click on that page real quick, Jason, it's like Elkhorn-specific.
Yeah, I got it.
You could also, okay, yeah, you could also QR code that into your phone, and it'll pop up too, but that's a, yeah, that's specific to, once you get into ours, there's a QR code, and it goes specifically to, and I think there's probably five schools in Wisconsin that are using it.
Oh, yeah, I didn't have a QR code, yeah, this is.
Scroll down more.
Buy it for $70, so I stopped.
Yeah.
Sorry, it goes somewhere in here?
Shouldn't, should be, I see Baraboo, is there's Heritage Christian, that's another one, it better be.
I did not do that for.
Now we're gonna keep going through till.
I read through it, and then I.
He, he called me out of the blue after we got going, and he, he came up to Elkhorn and spent, I don't know, two or three hours just talking and wanted to see everything, and it's super, been easy and good to work with too, so, and I think our coaches have liked it a lot, so.
John, are we doing anything to develop our coaches within their sport, so?
This software helps, they also are, you know, asked and encouraged to go and do as much professional development as they can, what it looks like, it's up to them, they're asked to be involved in state associations for their sports.
Is that something that they have to pay for, or, okay?
No.
So we have lots of, I guess depending on sport, I know when I coached high school football, it was a very huge conference, that was a school football coaches association conference.
Yeah, I think they're.
It's one of the best in the country, at least that's what they have, so. But, oh, yeah, it's a. But, oh, yeah, it's, uh. Large conferences, I, I know, yeah, I don't know, I would assume every, does every sport have an association, they run their conferences and clubs?
Yeah. And some are bigger than others, obviously.
Are we holding our, um. Our coaches to a standard of that, those same, that, those same six?
Yeah.
And are they confronted when they're not seen?
I, I would hope so. I mean, that WIA Award of Excellence, we won it a couple of years ago, and that's all based off of a bunch of criteria that fits around this model, um. We, we are not gonna win it this year. We had a player rejection in basketball, and so that type of stuff happens, but that's been a. He's in my office every single day, and we're working through what that looks like moving forward, so we don't make that same mistake again, so, and I know he felt really bad about it, it was a really unique situation, but. Our, I would hope our coaches are holding themselves to that level and are modeling those Cs that should be. Questions?
I believe so. And John has been an amazing trooper and, um. Yeah, it's great to have you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it's good to see you and sitting here.
Yeah, thanks. It might be best again.
Tell us about that AED training.
Yeah, that's true. It's a great weight loss program.
All right, next, uh, my minutes for officers, so this is now what we do, we do the full. When we visit out in the offices, we're scheduled after the election, but, uh. I think it's good to have a vice president in place since our decision to work this, uh. We have a board, it got missed on the last agenda, and they couldn't add it before the, uh. Yes, with all the records, so. So we do need to appoint a vice president. Once we do that, and if there's, it falls off. We never know what could happen, it's only a month and a half, but. These days, right? Um, so, we need a vice president, looking for a nomination.
Um, I move to appoint you that Ingersoll as vice president.
Well, we need to do a nomination first.
Oh, I, I, yes, you're right, you did just say that. I nominate you, Ingersoll, for vice president.
Are there any other nominations?
Sorry, man.
Any other nominations?
It's okay for people to, uh, president.
Well, no, I want to, should be also vice president.
I'll nominate Kevin Gehart.
I'll respectfully decline the nomination, but thank you.
Instead of respectfully declines.
I will respectfully renominate.
We'll respect that Kevin does decline that. So any other nominations? Well, I assume that was three times I've asked. All right, so looking for a motion to close the nominations and cast majority vote for. Oh, to close the nominations, we'll start with that.
I move to close the nominations for vice president.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved in second to close the nominations, let's do a roll call, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Gehart.
Oh, I was totally reading it off.
Mr. Gatten.
Wish everybody else could see, like, the teleprompter.
Uh, this is Ingersoll.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Now I would need a motion to appoint.
I want to appoint Julia Ingersoll as vice president, as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So moved in second to appoint Julia Ingersoll as vice president, as presented. Roll call.
Mr. Gehart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten? This is Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Just F Y, I did say yes, but apparently my microphone was muted, so I apologize.
Uh, yes to both?
Yes, yes, yes to both.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so since Julia is now the vice president, I believe we need to appoint a treasurer, sort of vice restorer. Looking for nomination.
I will nominate Ed Scarrow for treasurer.
You're like, God, the clerk can treasure.
No, that means we need to.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Do you want to be treasurer?
Yeah, I would.
It's only for a couple of months, right?
It's one month.
Yeah, that's fine. I can't read the whole budget, just a month and a half, right?
No. Anyways, so, uh. I'm not hearing any other nominations, so I guess I'd look for a motion to close the nominations.
I'll move to close the nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to close nominations, uh, roll call.
All right, uh, let's move to that. Uh, Mr. Gehart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
This is Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right, I'm looking for a. Motion, no, I have to point for a.
Yeah, no, I wish.
So motion to. Anybody making a, a motion to appoint?
I'll move to appoint Ed Scarrow as, uh, deputy clerk.
Treasurer.
Treasurer, oh, sorry.
I did that, yeah, as my vote, sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved in second to appoint Ed Scarrow as treasurer, as presented.
All right, Mr. Gehart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Yes.
All right, I don't think we need to appoint a deputy clerk for the month and a half, this.
I'm not on the ballot, yeah.
So, move back from that. Approval of this four minutes, so from February twenty seventh, this is test year agenda. Questions, comments? Hearing done, with promotion.
I move to approve the minutes of the February twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three regular session school board meeting, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved in second to approve the minutes of the February twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three regular session school board meeting, as presented.
Mr. Gehart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
General Other Fund Bills, Mr. Tru.
The General Other Fund Bills this evening covers checks number one four eight seven six one through one four eight eight seven three, wire transfer six. Seven sixty-six to seven eighty-five, ACH checks numbers five five zero to five nine one. Boyta checks number one four eight six seven six to one four eight, or, and one four eight seven one six. Option Project wires, seven pi six and seven six two, in the combined amount of six hundred forty-one thousand. Six hundred and six dollars and ninety-seven cents. And there was a memo providing some information on several of the bills in your board packet. And then follow me the bill listing to copy of the monthly treasury support to promotion of February.
Questions, Mr. Tru?
Um, the middle school gym curtain wrench system, was that part of a maintenance plan, or did it just break down?
It broke down.
Okay, so we just had to replace it?
Yeah, and that was the original. Yeah.
Yeah, the, the gears stripped or broke, so it.
Sure.
Came down.
So it was the original one?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was an unplanned?
Sure, that's, I guess.
Was a safety issue, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions?
So I was just gonna ask with the child and family therapeutic, um, there's two bills for that. It says SVP, I'm seeing services.
Would that be Spanish?
Is it?
Which, which ones were those, Jenny?
It's child and very, family therapeutic.
I think that, that was student assistant program.
Oh, student assistant program.
Okay.
And then we use some of our, um, state mental health programs.
Okay.
As I said, yeah.
Is the, um, is that related to the mental health services or the onsite therapy bill, or is it? So we've partnered with.
With a few.
Yeah, so we may see some different.
Different ones, yeah.
Or the, you need.
Yeah. That, that one gets only the local one that we usually.
The, the greens on there.
Yeah, but usually it's greens, yeah, so. Right, okay.
I think we're, we have three or four of them, I can't even see them, so it gets covered.
Other questions? Anyone online, if you can't talk here? Talk. Hearing done, looking for a motion.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, check numbers one four eight seven six one to one four eight eight seven three. Wire number seven six six to seven eight five, ACH numbers five five zero to five nine one. Boyta check numbers one four eight six seven six and one four eight seven one six. And option project wires, seven pi six and seven six two, in the combined amount of six hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred and six dollars and ninety-seven cents, as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So moved in second to approve the general and other fund bills of March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, checks number one four eight seven six one, one four eight eight seven three. Wire number seven six six to seven eight five, ACH number five, five two, five nine one. Way to check numbers, uh, one four eight, six, seven six, and one four eight seven one six. And option project wires, seven fifty-six and seven sixty-two, in the combined amount of six hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred and six dollars and ninety-seven cents, as presented.
Mr. Gehart?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
State report.
So. At Westside, with the end of the tribe, they have their good behavior celebration. So anybody that like didn't have an orchestra for all, got to celebrate that by playing games. And then in fifth grade, they had been building robots through PLTW's, um, module. And they finally got to test them today, or this past week. And then Friday, they had recess in the snow, because we got locked in it. At Tivitz, um, they were dissecting culprits, which I think we saw at Westside a few, uh-huh, like a month ago or something. And then they went to a hand-on museum. So they took a field trip there, and the kids seemed to really enjoy it, the pictures, and then they had crazy hair day. And then at Ja- Jackson, we have a new multiplication master. Um, our star of the week, I believe that's Kinder Garden. And then Battle of the Bookmasters, so those, um, those kids memorized the authors and illustrators of all their books, so they got handed orders.
Boy, that start of the week poster is way better than these.
I, I was looking at it too.
Congrats to that, yeah, well done.
At the middle school, they, in tech ed, they're doing like housing instruction, so they were doing like research on that. And then they also had their March Madness on Friday, and those are some of like the team and like dress ups that they decided to do.
It's so fun.
At the high school, um, those are our state gymnastics girls. And then the two girls in the picture at the top, um, are competing in half turn, our athletics team. And then Deca had state, and we have, I think, two teams going to, um, internationals for that.
And our girls gymnastics, to third overall at state.
Wow. Great.
I, they've had a, a lot of success, and I think them. Getting, I know it's not just from that high school work that they do, but having the equipment down and the dedicated space for, to work it.
Have we replaced that mine at state before?
Um, the.
I don't know.
I think in third last year.
I don't know team-wise, I don't know, last year we had, um, a state.
Okay, but as a team, that's, I probably don't think, that's, that's awesome.
And then at Options, they brought in reptiles for the board cave kids, so I like snakes. I thought that was cool. And then in second grade, they were converting like inches to feet and like feet to yards. So Miss Benny, their teacher, had done a guess like the length of their gym. And Autumn, which I think is in the upper corner, I don't know for sure, um, one was a guess of one hundred. And then at CCA, a lot had happened within the past two weeks. Um, they had an information meeting about a new opportunity, and it was basically. That if you went to CCA, you could earn an associate's degree through Gateway, so it was another partnership with Gateway. Which is, I think is very cool, and then they visited in Tegra.
Tegra.
In Tegra, yeah. Um, and I think it's just really cool that like our businesses are willing to like let the kids come in and see what it's like. And then we had a workshop that, um, Gateway went on for our CCA kids.
Director's report, Mr. Trudier.
Yes, sir. Good evening, everybody. I'm Chris Trudier, I'm the director of schoolwork opportunities. So wanted to just get in front of you and kind of share what's going on in my space. Um, it's hard to believe that we're almost approaching spring break. So three things I just wanted to touch base on. The first thing is Outworks, and, um. Kind of something new, I'll kind of give you a little background on it, um. Had a, Jiz and I talked to me last year about, you know, really wanting to tell our career pathway story. Like all the work over the last decade and beyond that's gone to build these. Seamless sequence of courses with experiences embedded into them at the high school. But even now, as we're expanding it at Options and CCA, and, and we've always had those conversations and kind of thought through that lens. And that's at the same time why other districts are, um, duplicating our work and trying to tell that story better than we do. Um, then, thank you, I'm not. Then, then, um, the other, the other part, where this Outworks kind of, where did this, how did this get birthed, right? Was, I mean, sixteen years high school principal, pretty well networked with people in the area and the region. Sitting down, talking to Joanne Pella, who's obviously, uh, been, uh, is experienced and is a superstar in her position. We always talk about how parents, staff, students, they just, all the stuff we have going on, if you get a vision talking to Joanne. She's wagging her finger at me and, and explaining to me on, you know, all these amazing things going on at our CT department. And, and with youth apprenticeships. And I then happened to be at a conference, and it's one of those conferences that. Probably if nobody is in the education world, you need like, uh, a glossary of terms, because you're like, why are these all very? And it's just alphabet soup, right? It's like, oh, so we have the Y E's and W L B, the W B L's and the cables, and then, and then we got P L T W, and then happened, and then, and I'm going. So it kind of bringing all those together, I'm just like, well, no wonder we can't tell our. So it kind of bringing all those together, I'm just like, well, no wonder we can't tell our story. Who can understand it, right? So just kind of thought about this and thought about, well, how can we couch this under like one term? And I was just thinking, my my oldest wants to go to Disney for graduation present, right? And if you see that symbol of Mickey, everybody knows, everybody knows, right? But when you go to Disney, it's just not Mickey. There's a ton of things going on, right? And I'm like, we just need like one umbrella. So Elk Works kind of just rolls off the tongue. The E L K stands for earning, learning, and knowledge. And um that's kind of like this brand for all of this. We, you know, if you go to our website, we have a webpage dedicated to that. Um, and and that's kind of was the goal, you know, and then through that, it kind of tells our career pathways start. And within our pathways, if you go and look on our webpage, it's in the About Us page, the main page. You can find that there's um our school district pathways. And thanks to Ms. Katie Hoffman, we put those together. And thanks to Ms. Bosch, Ms. Keel, and the and the high school team. We keep reviewing those and bring those out. We've printed posters and now they're public public at the high school. And it's really starting to be more part of the conversation. And the four ingredients are dual credit, co-curriculars, industry recognized certifications, Skills USA, just accomplish both of those. Um, and then work-based learning experiences, which is now the official title, you know, that they use for like YAs, what we know as YAs, right? And we've embedded those into those pathways. And then, of course, the state comes out with what are called RCPs, right? Let's keep going, right? Let's keep going. And those are regional career pathways. And they're just basically state-driven pathways, okay? And they're on the website. And so so we've included those. And right now, Oakhorn is one of the only, one of the few in CSO one. So what they do is they they're rearranging the states around like economic development organization groups. So like we're in Walworth, we're on we're on the fringe of it. We would fall into M seven, Milwaukee seven. That's the old, they're housed in the MMHC, which is Metro Milwaukee Area Chamber. And that's that's our group, so it's seven, it's Milwaukee County and all of the seven counties in that area. And that's their economic group. And then they're they then they have one up north, it's New North. And each area, each um economic development group is creating these regional career pathways. So throughout the states, they all have the same ingredients. The cool thing is, Oakhorn was ahead of that and we already had it in place. It was super easy to get those adopted and approved. Approved. Now, we have to figure out how we're going to integrate those and use those in our school. But I just wanted to give you, I just wanted to, we've had those in front, last year I shared those. We just added another one. We got approved those educational training agreement. So but all of these are falling under that Elk Works category, so we can kind of tell that start. And part of what I've been working with, Jan Anzalone, Joanne and Kelly and Sarah and Trish and Jason, kind of create these processes. So it's accessible to all students and all parents. Because I still get calls from maybe a parent that has their second or third kid coming through the high school and goes, Mr. Strattier, I gotta ask you a question. My god, they email me or whatever and and they're still trying to find like, my kid wants to do a job shadow, where do I find that? Well, I can tell you, I went on in our on our webpage and it just wasn't there. And even Joanne's like, yeah, we just gotta get that stuff out there. So just how do we create that kid wants to do, wants to work, right? How do I do that? I'm interested. Well, we created a form. So just trying to create processes and and kind of a repository for all this information so parents can go. And then also just kind of simplify. And that's really what we're trying to do. And then some strategies, um you could fi- you can follow Elk Works at Instagram, TikTok, YouTube, and we have a website. All right, so we've just been, I've been just trying to get that information out. And you can look at those links when you get a chance. And the kind of future steps are just keep keep embedding and creating. We have great relationships with business partners. How do how can we move those to the next level that are like strategic partnerships? Like what Watson Holmes did at the middle school. Like that's a partnership. What we did with Step and its other youth bill, right? How how can we continue to grow these foster these relationships so they're kind of almost like symbiotic? Where both parties are really benefiting from from the relationship. Um, so those are just some of the partnerships. ABC, I don't know if anyone's familiar with it. Okay, good. I figured at least one would, yes.
We're a big customer.
Yeah, it's um not not ABC Supply, nope. ABC is the American Builders Construction.
Oh, God, that ABC.
Yeah, sorry, different ABC, I apologize. Um, and then like the Buildings Association, we got a relationship with the Wisconsin Jobs Board, which has really been helpful because now that started off as five districts. And now Delvin is coming on board. Um, Waterford's on board and Katie Groff, another great partner of ours at Gateway, they're hoping to get that jobs board to be something for Walrus County and Wisconsin. So that will help our kids and our employers have full access. Uh, and then just keep scaling up the work that we're already doing. We've got great things going, just scale it up and make sure that we expand access and opportunity, right? Just keep going. So that's kind of just an overview of Elk Works. Obviously, uh New Whistle has taken off a little bit as we tell our story. Um, we we enjoyed Governor Evers on Friday. And just so it's public knowledge, we are fair and balanced as the New Whistle and we offered that opportunity to Speaker Ryan, he wasn't able to do it, so.
Speaker Ryan.
It's all right.
Okay, he's not speaker anymore.
Well, I understand, yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
They have to keep the title.
Yeah, they keep the title. Yeah, yeah, if, yeah. I saw President President Bush, I would say, you know, tough choice. So, I mean, you're fun, but you know. So, um, yeah, so that's kind of what we're looking to do. We're really looking to kind of scale those up. Jason, if I have the next slide. Oh, and then obviously we've mentioned here our charter school growth and expansion. These are uh the numbers from our third Friday count, so you can kind of see the growth. You calculate the open enrollment numbers alone. So I bring this to you because if somebody says, I wonder how much that marketing campaign costs. I'll just let you know that this is about, if you just generically calculated, doesn't include special ed and the regular ed, this is about two point nine million dollars just here. So um it's a it's a pretty high ROI, we turn on our bus. Um, so and we just keep, you know, kind of come out of different ways, but we're also thinking differently to say, hey, you know what? Optics are real, so let's, we we have hopefully uh another, um, we have a the Oakhorn Dependents will be doing a uh um hopefully someday, uh as promised three, two months ago, a uh an article on our pathways and then and then keep going, she's gonna do all this, met with the high school and do some more marketing there. She's been always really good about the uh options and the CCA. Uh, and then as as uh shared, we had our associate's degree cohort meet uh meeting, which um we've had over forty people apply from various around the state. We've had Willmont, Wisconsin, New Berlin, Waukesha, Muskego, Miguelo, and a bunch from the middle school who are all seeking this opportunity. And we're working through, we're not building the plan as we fly it, but um we're learning as we go. How's that?
How does that, how does that sound? I wanted to ask you when I.
Yeah, really good question. It was just a mailer. Just a mailer. So literally, we will partner up with a a printing company who can access, like we say, hey, we want to do, we want to reach this zip code and these grade levels and families with with it. And then then goes on.
But for the cohort, like did that email go out to all the incoming freshmen?
It did, that that's correct, yes, yeah. And then and the second phase was we pushed it out to the middle school and we posted on social media.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so and then hopefully there's a potential opportunity coming soon with, um, I know that Dr. Raju at Gateway is looking to do a similar opportunity, but virtually. So.
Yeah, she.
I wasn't sure if that was.
Wait.
Let's stay tuned, stay tuned.
She's very excited to create. Uh Gateway has a liberal arts um associate's degree, which was just approved last year. And I know Dr. Raju wanted to work through her team to, they already have seventeen associate's degrees, which you can take fully online. Um, but she would also like to create an opportunity that would provide a fully online associate's degree designed and developed for the high school students in particular, cater to that, but they can also.
So that's, yeah. I actually just had somebody in Milwaukee County just ask me that question, if they can join and be a hundred percent.
Yes, they can. And in fact, our first associate's degree students that heard that were thoroughly from the, yes, options one hundred percent. But you're mechanical or electrical engineer?
Yeah. If she was the girl that doesn't say electrical engineer.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah. And we have, they have several that are in that same pathway going on. And I think with this cohort, that will expand. I think what's really exciting though too is that these structures and students can be at any one of our pre-high schools and complete any of these pathways. Like you could be at the traditional brick and mortar building and still complete an associate's degree through Gateway.
Yeah.
And you don't have to transfer that. And part of this building these pathways and the structure was we we have this, I I would call it more of an internal because we haven't announced it as like, here's this official target. But what we're working towards is we'd like to see every single student graduate the high school with a professional certification um of some type, a professional credential, or having completed a youth apprenticeship or a job-based experience. Just as these three Skills USA students shared, they're they've got multiple certifications. We'd love to see that where one hundred percent of the kids are leaving Oakhorn, but at least that is a minimum. But we felt like before we can really launch that or set it as a reasonable goal, that we had to build these pathways and the infrastructure. Cause again.
Right.
Said that, that you have one hundred percent of the kids are going to graduate with that when you have, you know, only two or three avenues for them to go. And now I I think we're pretty darn close to having that infrastructure to the point where, you know, it's really reasonable for getting to where all of our graduates can have that type of experience.
Yeah, if you're a family, you could sit down, go look at the pathways and go, oh, my kid's interested in this. I think when people get fear, not fearful, but anxious or concerned about pathways, they think, oh my god, I need to tell you my kid is a sophomore, fifteen year old. Is that's going to be their career? No. It's based on, it's a it's a pathway for a student to engage in experiential learning and learn about that career with the understanding that maybe I do want to pursue that. But but I was just gonna say, you know what the next most important thing is to say? I don't want to do that.
Yeah.
Versus going to, and I on Instagram, I try and poke push out these short little vignettes about just videos that get people asking some questions in the community. And I heard a great, I I saw a great speaker and I'm forgetting his name right now, but he said, our 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 decision-making process for post-high school has been backwards forever. It's been pick your university, identify your degree, get your job. And that needs to be the reciprocal. It needs to be explore the job, determine the degree.
Yeah.
And then pick your post-secondary role, which may be for two-year military, whatever.
Yeah.
And I think that's what the power of these career pathways are. When we take hits from the CCA to employer visits, I always tell them, if you if you can walk out of here saying you don't want to do this, perfect.
Yep.
Perfect. You might need it someday, but now you don't, so. Um, it's and then redefending ready, just trying to work in with both charter principals in their schools to kind of develop some dashboards, just to get some metrics out there. Um, and then lastly, just uh from an academic group, academic programming, obviously, uh options is added PLTW. And then in the lens of a pathway at uh at the CCA, we're working on hopefully getting some training in either AMP and algebra, I put those links there so you can look at them, or geometry and construction. It's um it there are two cool cool courses that are taught by math teachers and a tech ed teacher. So they take like sixty kids and they split it and they and um uh the AMP, there I sent those videos out, they're from other districts. Cause believe it or not, I couldn't find great videos on it that kind of show it. But Kelly would like to, Dr. Delres would like to add geometry and construction as part of that youth build pathway. So it's pretty cool stuff. Yeah. And then lastly, just strategic partnerships, um just kind of going through some of them, I'll talk a little about youth build. The Wal- Walrus County CHIPS, the Community Health Improvement Plan, I've been at meetings there. Um, pretty cool that the Oakhorn Youth Build is actually integrated into their community improvement plan as part of a way to uh build uh workforce housing, it's no longer forum housing, it's all workforce housing. Um, so that was kind of cool, Kelly and I have been a part of that. Um, youth build, um we're waiting, we're running on the grant. Um, we did very well in getting, working to get good viable partners. Um, whether we get the grant or not, we will be working with the Walrus County Housing Authority, I'm sorry, with Habitat for Humanity for Walrus County. I'm running out on the construction board. Um, and our kids will be built, working on that, building that next house.
Yes.
And it's going to be in Whitewater. So what Habitat for Humanity, we only run Whitewater, I'm like, well, where are you still? Right, we'll drop off that. So um and then we and then we also got the Walrus County Housing Authority uh to sign off on the grant too. Which is big, because if you look at models for youth build around the country that involve a K twelve school district, there it's pretty, Katie James would say it's pretty uh common that those two organizations are tied there. So that's why we really wanted to reach out. And then jobs board, we're getting a bunch of, uh, that's fostering some written relationships with the more Wisconsin Manufacturing Commerce Foundation, the WMC. Um, so I had the opportunity to go to their Focus on Manufacturing breakfast, which was pretty cool. They're having a level up con- conference in Lake Geneva, so if anyone wants to sign up, they're gonna be there, Jason will be presenting. We were supposed to go last Friday, the eighth grade, we're supposed to go to Manufacturing Inspiration Days at Miguelo. And then, um, yeah, so these are just opportunities that are arriving from that relationship. And then transition services, uh Emily, I'm on the presentation in April or May, I don't know, still her thunder, but kind of a cool announcement. Um, we're gonna have five students with disabilities from CCA who are going to start their day at Lake One Lodge, getting paid and working three and a half hours a day.
Nice.
Yeah, it'll be really cool, five of them are rotating through and develop skills and hopefully they continue that, so. And then like the builders, working to kind of get Habitat for Humanity to build more than one house every other year and hopefully getting two a year, and that'd be great, that'd help our kids. And then the Associated Builders and Contractors Wisconsin, ABC, we worked, we partnered with them to get an Act fifty-nine reversal certificate, the NCC ER, which is National Center for Construction, Education Research Certification. And then we, I can't announce it yet because we're still working through, but our youth build may become a DWD pre-apprenticeship program. So we're working through ABC, it'll give us letter support for that. And then we're working through the Department of Workforce Development. And then all of our sixth graders are gonna go to Biz Town. If you want to watch that video, it's a short video in uh in May, so we're looking for volunteers for May fifteenth and sixteenth, which is, they they get a curriculum on financial literacy, career development. And then they go to Biz Town in like Howmany Falls, through junior achievement, but if you watch the video, they have, they have um basically Wisconsin businesses all over, Culvers. You know, We Energies, and the kids go up there and they get trained, we have volunteers and teachers go up there and they they uh start off either as a consumer or they run the business. And halfway through, they flip and they get dollars, Biz Town dollars, and it's a great career development experience. So it's expensive, but thank, we got the Oakhorn Foundation helping us, so we're going up there, Ryan, prove that, so that'll be pretty cool. So if you have some volunteer, we're looking for them. We need twenty each day, so. And then if you haven't, please subscribe to the Oakhorn You, Elk Works YouTube channel, please. Any questions? I went through a lot of information.
I was just saying, you know, we have our fingers crossed on the youth build grant, that's a very competitive grant. I think ironically, our our chances would be better next year because as we're closing this grant out and and we've gotten great reviews and and marks on it, it's because it's not completed, we couldn't use it, they can't look at that as being completed and it's successful in consideration for the new.
We're still following up with kids who completed the last part of the build, so technically our grant is still open. So we can't use our data in applying for the next grant.
Oh, okay.
So when that grant closes, we'll then be able to use that track record and that history and they'll be able to see, and they have fantastic data. Um, but fingers still.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that I was sold.
Yeah, oh yeah, right away.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they moved in by like October.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there are questions about the door going in from the garage. I'm just kidding, Jason, I didn't face that. That's a joke.
I wouldn't question that. Very fast inspection, I guess.
Oh.
Look great.
I'll connect with me sometime on some of the finish work. On if you get the grant again.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I I'm sure I'm sure we saw the same things.
Well, I think Greg would like to be involved.
I think we'd love to. That'd be kind of my baby, so I was a little particular and I really appreciated Jason showing me the things that. That'd keep kind of my baby, so I was a little particular and I really appreciated Jason showing me the things that maybe Greg could help with.
They weren't in the mood for my critique.
Yeah, yeah, after I'm driving down the road with my trailer full of leftover material because when we built the deck, we had 35 extra, five, no, 50-pound bags of concrete. 35, not like five, 35.
35?
Yeah. Yeah.
Just maybe some of those math classes and construction.
Yeah, yeah, but yeah, I was the only one standing in 80-degree heat loading those up, so.
Oh.
Yeah. My Irish grandmother was rolling her grave, listening to my language. All of 35 of them. Yeah.
Next time Greg rocks with you, that's just a workout for him.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I got a bad back, I'm not doing it.
Yeah, everybody, everybody had a bad back that day. Yeah.
I have to have one at you, we used to do the cohort on Monday at CCA, and I was not expecting the reaction from my 14-year-old. I thought he would kind of poo-poo the whole idea and he got in the car and I said, well, what'd you think? And he was like, that's awesome. He's like, yeah, let's, let's explore it. And I, I mean, that took me by surprise. And if he hadn't been there and seen it and toured Gateway and seen other kids wanting to do it and kind of been in that environment, he, there's no way I would have been interested in doing it.
Thank you, well, it's so cool because.
Thank you for hosting that, that was good, thank you for hosting that.
Yeah, no, you're welcome. I think it's just so cool because all of these things, I get to work with different people every day, right? So with Kelly, we had plans, I would meet with Tricia and Sarah, and then meet with Emily and then business partners and, you know, it's just, it's, it's great, the networking's great and it's good for our district, it's good for our teachers, it's good for our community, that they know all the amazing things we're doing.
I think we're making a lot of progress on that front. It's still a paradigm shift, to be frank, for, for parents and for students.
Paradigm.
I mean, you know, for my oldest, I basically almost had to make him do the CNC boot camp. I'm like, look, you want to go into mechanical engineering?
Yeah.
Getting this certification your senior year will be huge for you. So I don't want to leave the high school, all my friends, you're only going over second half of the day.
Yeah.
You're gonna be, he loved it. He loved that freedom of leaving the campus and going and doing that.
I wish it had been available.
And getting those certifications and, you know, may never use them, but it definitely helped him and he has those credentials, he'll always have those and it's a great experience for him, so.
Yeah.
I think we're getting there, Elkhorn, nobody in the Gateway footprint does more transcripted credits with students regardless of size. There's a lot of high schools a lot bigger than us. We do more transcripted credits in the district. Nobody has more certifications or nobody wants to post to number of apprenticeships. Yeah, and that number is just continuing to grow, so. Great work, and we couldn't do it without the work of people like Chris and Joanne, Ella and that team getting together and the principals being willing to get, you know, behind that with the teachers and the partners and everyone.
Shared vision, right, from all of us.
And trying things and having it realize that that's not the pathway was huge in our house with our oldest. So he almost had his associate's degree in electrical engineering and he decided that's not what he wanted to do and he got a full-time job and that was the end of it. As a parent, we didn't pay for any of it. And he got a great education and I think coming out of it, because I was disappointed if he didn't finish the course, he had relationships with those professors that he still feels like he can contact them anytime and ask questions. And they have emails and, so that perspective of just learning what you do and don't want was huge. So that was, I, I keep trying to tell the younger two, like, watch what your brother did, you gotta try things.
For that.
But, yes, you know, it's, it's good.
Yeah. Well, we tried with the New Whistle, trying to embed those same stories in, and like Patrick Gugoski, 2016.
Yeah.
His New Whistle was great because he spent the whole, all of it talking about networking.
Yep, he sure did.
He's like, oh, I had to. Well, that was great, yeah.
I really enjoyed the New Whistle.
Yeah, it's good.
I tune in just about every week.
Yeah.
If I'm able to, and, and then I'll go, if I miss it, I try and go back and watch it because I, I have found them very valuable and it's been fun for me to just even connect with, you know, see where some of those kids are at that, you know, are now in their careers and.
Yeah, it's super cool.
It's been fun.
Yeah. So, well, thanks.
Thank you.
Rep. Rennam update, we don't really have a whole lot other than our community meetings continue. This last week, Bill and I, I think we met with the last staff groups to provide them with the information, the support staff aides. We met with Tivitz PTO or PTA this coming week. We have a presentation with Rory Club. We were asked Jackson PTO and also Spring Prairie Township, which will be an interesting one because they touch Elkhorn, East Troy and Burlington. And they invited all three of us to go and present at their town hall meeting.
At the same time?
Yeah, well, at the same time. I actually don't think it's a town hall meeting, it's just a special meeting that they blocked off for all of us to go and present at at the same time where they do their presentations. So if you really want to know about Elkhorn and Burlington and East Troy, Thursday night at 6 o'clock at the Spring Prairie Township.
It's your Tuesday, and I'll be celebrating my anniversary.
Yeah, it sounds like a great event to go to, for your anniversary.
Yeah, I love it, excellent.
Personnel, we have a number of personnel items. Retirement of Stephanie Stanky from the high school.
Are we allowed to refuse her retirement?
I told her that, she laughed at me.
I'm sure she did.
Technically, we have, they, it's just crazy. We don't have anything incentive there. So, no, but I want to thank Stephanie and Gal for all of their work. Stephanie's been, I know all of us here, we see her every year, as that host advisor, who she's been the International Host Advisor of the Year, which is quite a accomplishment and what she's done with students for that service organization and club. Leaves some great big shoes to fill, so we give her a big thank you for everything she did with that. CTSO group, that Career and Technical Service Organization. Then we want to thank our other staff members as well for their service, Jeremy, Shannon, and then welcome Martin Cordova and Gilberto Huerta to our staff.
Has Stephanie been mentoring anybody for wholesome?
Yes, we have, she has an assistant, Kathy McNelson working as an assistant. And then I think she has a transition plan and she offered, while not to be the advisor, could be there as she does instructions, calls, and obviously wants to continue to be successful. Advis, but not advisor, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so that'll definitely be an important organization that we want to keep that moment in mind.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for March 13th, 2023, including employment contracts. In addition to passing the background check, Ian Distren mandated drug screening as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Hold on a second.
So I move to second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for March 13th, 2023, including employment contracts, in addition to passing the background check, Ian Distren mandated drug screening as presented.
Mr. Gayher?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten? Mrs. Zingersong?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
School gifts.
We have a number of school gifts to present this evening. The American Legion Post 45 has donated $1,000 for a snack in a pack. The Elephant Christian Schools donated $358.71, $358.71 cents for a snack or pack. Andrea Lazzaroni has donated a gift card to River Music Company for $400 to Jackson Elementary.
Thank them. Looking for a motion to approve generous.
I move to accept the generous school gifts.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I move to second to accept the generous school gifts from the American Legion Post 45, the Elephant Christian School and Andrea Lazzaroni.
Mr. Gayher?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten? Mrs. Zingersong?
Yes.
Yes, I apologize, sorry.
Did he have something on the last one?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
Second reading of everybody's policies.
I have not had any questions related to the wording in any of the policies as it relates to a need for change, anything along those lines.
So they should be good to go for people. Any other comments? Questions for Mr. Phil?
I move to approve the revised policies for 53.6 physical and dental examination for 53.6 vision, hearing, scoliosis and academic screening. 342.2, Section 504 policy and to delete the policy 342.2 rule. Section 504 manual procedures as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I move to second to approve the revised policies for 53 physical and dental examination for 53.6 vision, hearing, scoliosis and academic screening. 342.2, Section 504 policy. And then to delete policy 342.2 rule, Section 504 manual procedures as presented.
It's 43.
Did I say something wrong?
Yeah, it's 453.5.
I wondered about that, I'm like, why are they the same?
It's just a simple type of, but it's, it's clear on the agenda.
Okay. Hello, anyone?
Mr. Gayher?
Yes.
Mr. Gatten?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.
23 summer maintenance projects, Mr. Trumoges.
This evening, the board is being asked to consider approving our proposed 2023 summer maintenance projects. It's an annual process we go through based on our kind of 10-year rotating capital improvement plan, working with our buildings and ground supervisor, Eli Tamech, Eli Tamech, along with building principals and our buildings and ground committee. We kind of come up with a priority list each year. And if you kind of go up a little bit, Jason, there's a, right, where's the summer maintenance project? Slides and pictures, if you click on that, there's just a couple of pictures that we show for people for the board. But one of the things we've been looking at is, is a lot of our flooring at the school district and our classrooms are what's called ATC flooring, it's these 12-by-12 tiles, you've probably seen them. And they do involve, every year in terms of ceiling, there's a process of stripping and waxing, which means our entire custodial staff in the summer basically is doing the floors. And then you're tearing everything out of the school in terms of the classroom and doing that stripping and then resealing it. They look great when they're done, but it's extremely labor-intensive to be doing every summer. So one of the things we started talking about is maybe switching over, there's some new products and then the vital products are so nice and you don't require that type of care. It's basically wet wash and dry and you're done. So we started to focus on the high school and particularly the second floor of the high school. We have a number of rooms that still have the asbestos kind of tile and some of that's breaking up. There's about four, I think, rooms we identified. And the other reason is, is the second floor of the high school is a bear to try to get during the summer because it gets so hot. So we're really kind of looking at how do we kind of move that direction maybe over time and start maybe with the high school. So we just got a number of rooms that we identified. I think if you scroll through here, you'll see kind of pictures of what that looks like. So that's, that's the existing flooring that we have and some of those are asbestos, some of them are not. That's what the LVT looks like and on the bottom right, that's our option school, so it's the main hallway going down there. I wish we did a number of projects back in 15, 16, this product was available because we haven't done a lot of classrooms with it. So it's just, it just makes sense and it's, one of the quotes we got, I think, two, both of them have 25 and 30-year warranties on the product. So basically, even if the tile goes bad, you can take it out, put a new one down, it just makes sense. So, so that's one of the things we're looking at and I think the next page kind of shows the classrooms at the high school is kind of a start. And then as we see flooring throughout the district that needs repair, we use that standard kind of going forward. Really, and I think it'll save money for the school district in time, so.
Eli had talked about that with me, you know, just about how labor-intensive, you know, and having to move everything and.
The labor costs and then also workhorse time. So.
And it's for you, we get the PPE equipment for all the staff, it's still, you're on the wet floor.
Yeah, the dry time and just, yeah.
So it just makes sense. Again, I wish those products were really old years ago, so.
Yeah.
So we have that as one of our proposals. I think the next one, we're looking at updating some lighting at the high school football field. Those ballasts are older ballasts and we're able to purchase a number of ballasts and a number of bulbs, so we can at least replace the eight bulbs out right now. With the plan in the future, probably looking at LED kind of.
I was just gonna say, what's the plan to convert to LED?
Yeah.
No, we're in the process of getting quotes.
Okay.
This is just to replace the burned out ones.
And we have the bulbs, so really the cost is to get the, the, lifted there to do a fresh. So, but one of the things we need to figure out is can we use our existing poles with the LED? Because they have the 100-foot poles, those eyes are 80, but we haven't finished the evaluation, but I think in the long term, that might be a better solution. And then we have some roof replacement in Jackson, we're looking at two roofs there. We got some really good numbers, we thought, actually about 25,000 less than what our budget estimate was in terms of doing those two roofs. So this is kind of our annual roof replacement project. Jackson's got 22 roof sections on that school. It's based on the renovations, the additions and such that occurred since it was the high school, middle school, now Jackson. So two roofs, I think 15 and 16 at Jackson Elementary, so that's one of the projects. And then this shows the roof that's here, furious to look where various are. And then the next page, just finished on painting in Tivitz, we had one of our custodians some years ago start that project, so we just want to finish it out. And then the next one says curb repair district-wide, so we set aside some budget funds just to repair some of that safety zone that's just how it looks and just to clean that up a little bit throughout the district. And then door replacement, we have two sections, I think, at Jackson Elementary and then we're looking at the gym doors at the middle school. And then the flagpole at Tivitz, finding a new location for that. We've had trouble with that pole falling and a number of things, so we've worked with Mr. Frost and found a viable solution to replace the flagpole. And then we can take the light and move it too, so that it actually shines on the flag. And then for tech ad, looking at a couple of projects there, two of them in the auto area is update some heaters that really don't work very well in that area and then actually install some fans, so they've got some air movement in that area, it can dry off a little better. And then the welding shop tends to get pretty warm, it's all interior area, so putting some AC hookup in that. And we would use some, some of our ACT 59 money to do part of those projects, but most of it would come from the maintenance budget.
And the fans in the auto shop are important to get a, I don't know if you have any problem with the cause, basically get it so that the auto fuses aren't getting sucked into the rest of the air system throughout the school and getting pushed out.
Yeah.
Aside from a comfort level. And, yeah, I think when I was at the international manufacturing trade there with the CTE folks, that we went by the fan sections, that's what they, the welding shop gets in the 95-degree range on those, my days. So hopefully dampen them a little bit.
And then we spent some time looking at possibility of a solar project. And we focused on the high school because that's our largest energy consumption building. So our first look at it seemed to show that we have some payback, maybe six, seven years, depending on what kind of grants we. Our first look at it seemed to show that we have some payback, maybe six, seven years, depending on what kind of grants we would receive. Um, we first looked at the agility center roof, and then after doing some research, found out that the capacity loads on that roof really wouldn't accommodate the solar panels. Even some of our roofs on the high school wouldn't as well, but we had to have more of an engineering review, plus there's some, there's some maintenance issues about having solar on roofs, if you have roof trouble, you have to disassemble all of that, so. Um, so then we started looking at a couple of ground solutions. We looked at kind of the front of the high school area, and with the setback on Geneva Street, along with maybe concern about the, the glare, there really wasn't enough area and, you know, section of the school, plus the infrastructure to get it to hook up to the building was pretty expensive, so. We looked in back of the high school, basically the back, the back of the, um, greenhouse area, where there's that, you know, auxiliary field. There's some negatives with that, obviously, because you lose some field space in order to do it. Ultimately, we worked then with a company called Legacy Solar, um, and they do consulting in terms of studying the project, and and they did some preliminary work. We're still waiting to get quotes from, I think, two vendors, including panels, electric, just to evaluate. But it appears that the payback is more like twelve years plus, it's a pretty significant investment, so I, I don't think we're anywhere near recommending anything at this point, but we thought it was worthwhile to pay them back.
Sure.
So that's as far as we are with that.
Katie James is working on a grant which would put together a more, a team that would look at a long-term comprehensive type plan, which would then make you eligible for more significant or larger grants, which then could potentially make a project like that more feasible where we also via grants, but that would be a long time down the road, yeah.
So moves solar updates, we're working with a company called Energy Management Block Works. They work with a number of schools, and Eli contacted other parts, and they install software and, and look at your energy use and, and try to shed what's called your high demand areas within your electrical bill. So basically, it's your high energy uses, can you turn different equipment on at different times, so it moves your bill? So they've got a program, or really there's no investment from the district, and you just do a shared savings, so. We're looking at that, um, or maybe the high school, middle school. Those are some projections over a two-year period. Um, you can kind of see how that would work out. There's really no risk to the district, and you can save some money in electrical, that's, that's our big issue.
So how do they get paid?
They, it's a shared savings, so what they do is invest, they put in the software and a meter and such, and then you do a shared savings with them for two years of fifty-fifty.
Okay.
That's how they get paid.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's their incentive, but a number of districts have found success with this, and it's worked out well, so we've found. Maybe in lieu of solar, it makes some sense to look at this, if you can save some electrical costs. Why wouldn't we do that?
It's interesting. There's a startup in Boston that presented all on that.
Oh, really?
And just time of day and usage and what's being used, and there's a team out of Chile, and it was, it's, it's interesting how they can.
Yeah, there's.
Vagr, you know, just.
The gentleman, sorry, this company was one of the executives of the energy.
Yeah, it's a women.
So the project total, we, we usually budget about a half billion dollars for annual maintenance, so based on these numbers, it comes in a little bit less than that, but I think that's probably good, it's a decent contingency for your house that might come up, like a wench.
Right.
Or something like that. So, questions?
I have less of a question and more, I guess more of a statement. Um, so my concern is, is that in less than a month, we're going to be going to, uh, the, the voters and requesting an increase uh, in our ability to be able to raise, uh, uh, taxes. Um, and in the meantime, we're also in, over the next, you know, couple of months, we're also doing some improvements or repairs that may not be able to be done, just because they, the voters may not approve, uh, ultimately our budget, uh, that's, that's upcoming. So, I mean, I guess my question is, is, I mean, where do we go with this, with these maintenance projects if the referendum is not approved? Is it already money that's already allocated towards this, or is it money that we will have to allocate towards this?
Yeah, I guess, Devin, to answer your question, we typically have, have within our maintenance budget included um, ongoing maintenance for the school district, so that would include roof projects, hardscape, a number of projects that you'll, you'll see that we talked about just this evening. Um, so that, that's already built into our budget, so I don't know if that clarifies, we're not adding to our budget to do these projects, these are built in as annual maintenance.
It does answer my question, thank you.
It, it used to be three hundred thousand a year, and a number of years ago, the board raised that to five hundred thousand dollars a year for maintenance. But what's, but though our total square footage in the district, do you recall the process?
Seven hundred ninety-two thousand square feet.
All right, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, and I know when we look at that, I think industry standard is that, um, how much do they recommend that your budget per square foot on it? I know we're well below that. I wish we could have more in that maintenance budget just to keep up, and that's why, to be frank, we're kind of dependent on those referendums to knock out a lot of those projects. As they come out, I wish we probably, to keep up with that maintenance that we have, we probably could use the maintenance budget of about a million I have to here. Um, would be better suited, but it is five hundred thousand is better than three hundred thousand where it used to be.
Even our rookie projects, uh, we have like a ten-year plan, just rookie projects, and we keep kind of doing a project every year, we're able to kind of keep ahead of it. I know our next big project is, is Skylights at West Side, and then eventually our, our middle school, the problem.
And boilers, yeah.
Boilers, yeah.
All stuff that's not public, so, yeah. Like access.
Uh, move to approve the proposed twenty twenty-three summer maintenance projects as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
So move to second to approve the proposed twenty twenty-three summer maintenance projects as presented.
Mr. Gaynor?
Yes.
Mr. Gatton?
No.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton? All right, we have the class of twenty twenty-three E portfolio presentations are scheduled for April twenty-fourth from five to eight. Um, board members wishing to attend, uh, email Mrs. Bosch and let Jody know in case we need to post. And we'd like to schedule a personnel committee meeting on Monday, April third, one o'clock or noon with work for the committee. Those members are Matt, Juliet, and Paul.
Either time works for me. It doesn't matter.
I think either, yeah, I think either time will work for me as well.
It wouldn't work for me, but that day doesn't work, but.
You want us to look at a different day, like April tenth?
April tenth at work, it is early in the morning or in the afternoon.
Does the tenth work for you, Paul?
Uh, I'll have to check, I don't have my phone in front of me. Can I get the, the time for the tenth?
That'd be, uh, well, we haven't set a time yet. Yeah, why don't we, um, I'll have Jody send out a doodle. We have plenty of time before then, so we'll look at a different date than April third. All right. That's all there is.
Is there a second?
Mr. Gaynor? Mr. Gatton? Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Colton?
Yes.